A moment of silence for all our kids are going up for the early this summer. They're all safely safe for all our parents and coaches are loving it.
Thank you. To the rest of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Counselor Nibody.
I approve of the agenda as is.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Welcome.
Counselor Romero.
Yes.
Counselor Livali Jr.
Yes.
Counselor Casey.
Yes.
Counselor Howell.
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Nibody Jr. or second by Counselor Casey and Counselor Howell. Thank you very much. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is public input. We have Mr. Roberto Ortiz, HR and chief staff, and I do have a letter that I would request to be clerked to pass out. Mr. Ortiz.
Good evening, Madam Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Ortiz. How are you doing?
I'm so. I know Roberto Ortiz has been an employee for the City of Las Vegas in the Fire Department for 10, more than 10 years. I love my job. Moreover, I love everybody who I work with. We are brothers there. We have a relationship that's strong and built by integrity and trust. I'm here tonight to speak about the audit finding for City of Las Vegas Fire Department and HR staffers as well. So I've known Billy and April for the past 10 years. April was there at the beginning when I first started my tenure at the Fire Department. I fully support my chief. He has done more than enough for our department, gone up above and far beyond what he needs to do to call of duty. We're a close-knit group of guys, and if an issue arose or HR was ever needed in our department, we would have heard of it on the grounds with each other. Nothing's ever been brought forth or even mentioned about the relationship between Billy and April or his assistant Cassandra. Like I say, we're a close, close group of guys, and it would have been heard about. Actually, it's a benefit for us to have April in the Human Resources Office, as she knows exactly how our department runs. It's not an 8-2-5 job at all. It's way different. Our time sheets are different. The way the guys work are different. It's a whole different atmosphere, 8-2-5 job compared to our 48-96 schedule. It's probably different. April knows exactly how it runs at the department, and it's a benefit for her and HR if we ever needed anything. Bless you. I've never witnessed any boundaries being crossed between Human Resources or our department, and actually, to tell you the truth, I've had Human Resources, use of Human Resources in the past year, and everything was totally fine. There was nothing ever to cross that line where any questions asked on either side, and I really appreciate info for that and her staff in Human Resources. This audit has brought this relationship to life, which has no impact at our department at all, but the previous chief and city manager, two city managers back, that relationship was negative, and did bring a negative impact to our whole department, and morale was very greatly decreased by that. So right now, our morale is very high. Our guys here, most of them that can't make it, the ones who couldn't wanted to be here, but they might in a while. Like I say, we're a united department with a common goal of public safety with high moral and ethical standards. That's all I have to say. Do you have any questions for me?
I can't. We'll not open it up for public comment.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ortiz, for that statement.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Next on the public input listing is Mr. Daniel Atencio.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Atencio. I'm a firefighter with the City of Las Vegas Fire Department. I'm also a county fire chief, and my county fire chief status falls into play with April and Chief Montoya. I've worked with them for over 10 years, and they've helped us out plenty on the county side. On the city side, I'd like to just point out that the Fire Department is somewhat of a paramilitary kind of organization in a sense in its structure of rank. And with that being said, what happens in that case is this individual or individuals that came forth with that statement that they said, I think they were misunderstood about how they can come about accessing resources from the Human Resources Department. What happens is that we have a structure. As a, I'm one of the lower firefighters on the totem pole. I have a rank structure for my lieutenant. For my lieutenant, I have a captain. For my captain, I go to my assistant chief. Chief can also attach to that. It's the same principles in the Police Department and for the most part, majority of the city employees as well. I'd just like to point out that it's just, I think, a miscommunication there, and as there ever is an issue that might arise, they just need only to follow their chain of command, and from that point, there's plenty of resources they can access to mitigate their solution or find a solution for their problems.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atencio. Next, we have Joseph Garofalo.
I might have missed your name. I apologize.
Don't worry about it. You might take a seat.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Counsel. Thank you for allowing me and my staff attorney to be up here. I'm going to go ahead and introduce myself for those crowd or appear that don't know who I am. My name is Joseph Garofalo. I'm an engineer, EMT Basic, with the City of Las Vegas Fire Department. I've been there for five-plus years now. I'm also the union president for the IAF Local 4625. We have about six members, and that's including myself, and that's who I'm up here representing today, because we unanimously voted in support, and we came to show you that today, for the personnel mentioned on page 53 of the consulting service report. Personnel are as follows: Chief Montoya, Cassandra Fresquez, and Ipo Gonzalez, and it's concerning the relationship that they all have. And it was nothing new to us, like I said, like they've been saying. You know, it was just facts that were stated, and it came to light. In the audit, it stated that some FD personnel felt like they could not report personal or HR-related issues, and the reason I'm up here today is to reassure you that these words do not reflect the attitude of the union members, some of which are here today and some of them also couldn't make it. And I believe that the city manager also passed out a letter that I wrote to these individuals and mainly to interim city manager Anne Marie Caigos. And also, yeah, we don't know where these feelings are coming from, which that, you know, it could be brought to light so there could be a solution to it, but right now, they're just words and accusations, and there's not much we can do about it. But I would also like to address that the union has never felt that there was any undue influence from HR or our fire chief. They all have conducted business fairly and professionally, and we acknowledge them for that and thank them. The union also acknowledges these individuals have served the city for many years, and I'm kind of just throwing out numbers. I know our fire chief has served for 17-plus years. Ms. Fresquez, who I've met with frequently, being that I'm the union president, I believe she's been here 15-plus years, and Ms. April Gonzalez, who was the admin when I first started at our department five years ago, and I'm sure she's been here 10-plus years. These positions that they have obtained with hard work and dedication, and that's the only way that, you know, they could have got to where they are today, and we're blessed to have them serving our community. So in closing, I just want to thank you for listening attentively and being diligent and patient through this whole process, and also lastly, I would like to encourage these individuals, Chief Montoya, Ms. Fresquez, and Ipo Gonzalez, to not worry about what you think this may have done to your reputation, but worry more about your character, which has guided you to where you guys all are today. And lastly, I, so that wasn't the last plea. I want to end with a quote, and it goes as follows: "Be more concerned with your character than your reputation, because your character is what you really are, while your reputation is merely what others think of you." John Wooden. So thank you again. That's all I have today, and thank you for listening to us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joseph. Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that concludes our public input for this evening. The next item on the agenda.
I want to thank each and every one of you.
I'm sorry.
For being here this evening and supporting our fire chief and also April and also city clerk. I think that's very admirable of you. I know it's been a difficult time in regards to the special audit, the audit that we have going. I pretty much have concluded, if I'm correct, in public housing. In addition to the most recent regular audit that we have, I also want to commend, of course, Anne Marie and the staff who have been doing an exceptional job and right now are in preparation for, to meet the 45-day requirement for the upcoming budget.
Yes.
So I anticipate that that will go along for this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and expressing your concerns and your support. Thank you very much.
Can we give them a round?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 18-17 authorizing the lease of a small partial property located in the rear of the Herald and Duke Fire Station by American Towers. Madam Mayor, members of the council, in front of you, you have, and I have too, Resolution Number 18-17. This is authorizing the lease of a small partial property located in the rear of the Herald and Duke Fire Station by American Towers. This lease has been ongoing since 2006. American Towers is looking to renew the lease for an additional 30 years. They would extend it for, they are requesting that we extend it for an additional 30 years for use of a cell phone tower. An appraisal was completed by Northeastern Land Appraisals and reviewed and approved by our interim city attorney. The appraisal and the market value of said property is $14,000. Approximate size of the partial land is 1,995 square feet. American Towers will continue to pay rent on the said property and shall remain at $15,870 for a 30-year period. American Towers is also, will also pay upfront a $50,000 fee to the Fire Department, City of Las Vegas Fire Department. The current lease, which is currently in place, will expire in 2026. They are just looking to extend it for an additional 30 years. We did get, we did get an authorization from Mr. Nelson Smith reviewing and making sure that we complied with all of the requirements that were, that are towards a lease agreement with the City of Las Vegas, and along with that, I have Mr. Billy Montoya here, who can also answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay. Would you please come forward, Mr. Romero? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, manager. Thank you. Basically, everything that our manager just discussed with you is what's going on. This tower has been located at the rear of the Fire Department since 2003. It's an ongoing lease, and they want it extended an additional 30 years. Now, for every five years, it's considered a term. Each term that passes, we get a 15% increase in that term as well. So I definitely see it beneficial to the Fire Department. It's our, it's not much money at the 15 grand a year, but it's what we rely on as backup in case of equipment breaks or any mishaps occur that we can't use general funds for. We have, maybe we exhausted our fire funds, or they got cut again. We rely on this to kind of get us through to the next fiscal year.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The money that, first of all, we have the escalation clause, 15% every five years, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so you review that then every five years.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, the money that comes in, is that going to be going specifically to capital projects, or is it going to be put into an open line item?
We have a line item. Well, we have a fund. It's called the 764, and it's broken down into line items. Some line items on there are equipment line items, get X amount of dollars, CPR equipment, stuff like that.
So you transfer in and out from that account?
Yes, ma'am.
I have no further questions. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Counselor Casey.
Thank you. The letter from Beth Hansen on land acquisitions from American Towers says to complete the W-9, expedite a one-time payment to $50,000. What is that payment for?
That $50,000 is incentive to extend the lease an additional 30 years, and that would get deposited into that 764 fund for use for equipment or wherever need be that falls into that fund.
Okay, so then this is, like you said, the incentive for the 30-year lease extension.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the regular.
And we would still.
And the regular.
We would still receive our annual income as well.
Thank you.
What is the, what is the regular rent at?
Right now, it's at $15,500 and some change.
And the escalation will be reviewed every five years?
Yes, ma'am.
Make sure we all have it clear.
Yes, ma'am.
One other comment, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is the tower is also available to the City of Las Vegas in case we need to install anything in that tower. There's room enough at the top that would be able to, IT would be able, of course, to install whatever their needs were if there was a need in the future for us to use that tower, and that will be made clear in contract as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Counselor Howell, do you?
Thank you, Mary. Chief, the cell tower, who's using it right now?
Right now, the company is American Tower.
No, I know that. Is it for the, like you had mentioned.
For all the hotels and.
Throughout the whole city?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a cell tower, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do you use it for your purposes as a fire?
No, sir. No, sir.
No?
But we could at some point in time in the future, if the city decided to do anything or to utilize that tower, we would have the mechanism to do it.
So for example, if IT wanted to install some type of air fiber connection and he needed that location, we would be authorized to utilize that.
Is the American Tower the provider, or is it just the company that puts up the?
Right now, they're the ones that have all the equipment on there, and they, if they were to sublease to any other companies, that would be an agreement between them. The agreement right now that we have with American Tower is strictly between American Tower and City of Las Vegas.
Okay. So is it different from, like, say, Desert Gate?
I have.
As a provider, the competition with Desert Gate?
I believe Desert Gate is more of an internet service provider, and this one would be a cellular service provider. I don't know as far in depth as the details as the, exactly what they provide. That would be something that we would have to discuss with probably Beth Hansen.
What other cell towers do we have here?
As far as the City of Las Vegas, we don't have any cell towers. I saw another one that went up right behind you, but no, there's nothing on it yet. It's still an empty tower. I've seen a couple elsewhere throughout I-25, but I couldn't tell you who they built.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what is the special proposal? Consent? Consent?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Caigos. Do we have the little league position?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
There's just a couple of comments. The Little Leagues are opening up this weekend. They have invited mayor and council. The East Las Vegas Little League will be here at Keys Park, and it'll be at 8:30 on Saturday morning, and the West Las Vegas La Plaza Little League will have their opening ceremonies, and it'll be at 1 o'clock. They've asked it to be there by 12:30, and that's Sunday at Rodriguez Park as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
Will we have other agenda items next week?
Yes, we will. We, Madam Mayor, I may.
So we will have two public hearings. One will be for the lodgers tax increase of 1%. So that's been published, so now we come to, before you for adoption. And then I have a liquor license from Oklahoma City for B3, and it's basically going to be the same thing that they applied for January of 2017. However, there was some change in ownership, and that's why they had to take it back to them. We'll have those two items, and then I believe we have the audit.
Yes, the audit proposals.
Audit RFP for the next three years?
Yeah, the next three years. Yes, ma'am.
Will we have anything on this?
Two presentations.
Special audit approval?
Yeah. We have a couple of options with the, with the special audit. The state auditor as well as the, as the auditor himself, that porch will not be here. They've already finalized the audit, and they, they had introduced, they had given you a presentation in an exit session regarding the special audit, and so at this point, the audit is finalized with the state auditor. We have options as far as either going out and having a special meeting and then opening it up to discuss the recommendations and, the recommendations and the audit findings, if that is the pleasure of the council, mayor and council. We can also discuss any other items that you may have, but at this point, state auditor and the auditor himself will not be present. It would be just mayor, council, and staff.
I thought it was, my understanding, if I understand correctly, that it was my understanding that the council is supposed to approve the audit, not necessarily discuss it or have them here present, but it was supposed to have been approved by the council.
That's on the.
Through the regular council meeting.
That, that would be on the financial, the financial statement audit, which you did approve back in February, I believe.
That was irregular.
But not the special.
No, I'm talking about the special audit.
No, no.
Also requires approval by the council.
It does not.
It does not?
Yeah, I did, I could verify that, and it does not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Howell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to comment, Carnegie Library called me and wanted me to mention that this is National Library Week, and they want the community to know that they are going to have an amnesty program for anybody that has overdue books. So if you have an overdue book, go over there and let them know so you don't have to pay for it. So, but please go and visit the library. They're excited that this is National Library Week and wants all our children and adults also to visit it and to get educated about National Library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments, questions?
Just one more that I just wanted to know. Without letters from AWC asking for renewal of contract, will that be on the agenda sometime soon, or are you just going to negotiate with them as you build the budget?
I think that the best thing to do is to start the meetings, start meeting with them and start negotiating the contract. I know that they have requested several items on the, on the contract itself. Community development is also, are the ones who spearhead that, and so we'll get them going on the contract as well. I'll bring it back to you, of course, for final approval.
On that line, AWC mentioned that within their contract, we're supposed to have a meeting with the council and public. That's part of their contract before it gets renewed, I guess.
Okay.
Have we worked on that, or?
No, have not.
Do we have public input meetings? Have they been holding public input meetings?
We have been, and they have been here at public input as well. They've been doing their monthly.
Giving updates.
Yes, they come in and they give you monthly updates. I don't know if you want anything further, or if you want a public meeting with AWC and the public itself.
I think that's what Marshall had stated, that that's in the contract.
Okay.
So if you can maybe review it.
Absolutely.
Get it back with us.
I should.
Because they're really wanting to make sure that they comply with every aspect.
Absolutely.
They're doing it really well.
They are.
Any other questions?
Ms. Caigos, the water in our baseball fields, they start watering our fields.
Yes, they did.
Because of real dry, and people are asking colleagues.
And then we need to get ready for our, for our baseball games and for our Little Leagues and for softball. Yes, they did start. We had a couple of bumps on the road with the veterans part, but that, of course, isn't anything to do with the baseball fields. But yes, they have been watering, and they're getting, they're working more and more. I think they're working out, they were working out at Rodriguez Park.
Okay, and I think, how about, they're asking about erosion of the, when the rains, you know, the, some of the, the culverts and the side of the roads are very, very developed and has taken over some of the roads, like in the back part of Rodriguez. These grader can go out there, maybe do some work to the, to the roads going in and coming out and the sides of it. You know, there's, there's a lot of erosion on them, and some of the water that's going into the fields and, you know, so maybe you can have one of your directors go out there and see what's going on.
I will, I'll meet with them tomorrow, and on another note, with public facilities, we've started the, some of the pot recommending. We're do, we're going to be doing potholes on Tuesdays and Thursdays for two, three months, so if you have anything that you would like us to look at, by all means, give us a call or give public facilities a call, and we'll try to address those as we can. Thank you very much.
Counselor Howell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Caigos, 2017, we had a semi-wet year, and during the rains, we had a lot of flooding in, on certain properties throughout the community.
Yes.
And especially Cinder Road.
Yes.
And also Mr. Court's property area and Vida and Cantada. They're, the Vida and Cantada is very concerned about if it starts to rain again, and their residents are, the housing is right next to the alleyway, and the water last year went inside their property, went inside the residential building, and they are very concerned about that. And they would like us to really take a look at it before, do some preemptive actions.
And the alleys.
Also, the Cinder Road, and because I'd like to, since they're in, in my area, I'd like to see if Mr. Christie, is that?
Mr. Olarte?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes, if he and I or you can go to the site and talk to the property owners in that area.
I think that.
And have them stress your, their concerns to you.
Absolutely.
Because it's really important. And also, my, one of my employees lives on Prince Street. There, when it floods, it just goes all over their front yards and almost entering their home. So those are the type of concerns that they have.
I'll be glad to.
And right now, we don't have any rain, but I'm sure it's going to come.
It'll come.
And.
Fourth of July is right around the corner.
Yes.
Yes. What I'll do is I'll have Mr. Olarte, him and I will contact you.
Okay.
And.
We'll set a time.
Set a time where we can, I'll visit with you and go out there.
Wonderful. And I'm sure that some of the other counselors have, their community members calling them about this.
Absolutely.
Who's in charge? Is Chris in charge of the baseball field?
Yes.
Can you have him contact you, sort of go over some stuff with him?
All right. He is actually going to be in Albuquerque tomorrow doing some.
That's fine, whatever's got a chance.
But he will, it might not be tomorrow. It might be a little bit the day after.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. Ms. Caigos, I would advise you to set up an emergency management meeting with the team in preparation for the rains if they do come. I must be optimistic. Second of all, I would also advise you to include Counselor Nibody, because the areas mentioned fall under the USGA as a footway area, and that is in Counselor Nibody's board, and exactly where I had, that's the Cinder Road area, and also follow that. So I would advise that she also be present for that meeting.
Yes, it's fine.
I have no further questions.
Any other questions? Okay, motion adjourned.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
One second.
Second.
Welcome.
Counselor Casey.
Yes.
Counselor Romero.
Yes.
Counselor Howell.
Yes.
Counselor Livali Jr.
Yes.
I have a motion by Counselor Casey, second by Counselor Romero and Counselor Nibody Jr. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion carries. Thank you, Madam.